All right, praise the Lord everybody, praise the Lord everybody. Welcome to our deeper life Bible study session. Glad to be back in the house of the Lord one more time. Glad to be back on Facebook. Amen again, we've had some things going on, amen. It seems like we haven't been here for a while, but we thank God that we're here one more time. We appreciate the Lord, appreciate you, appreciate those of you that are coming in on Facebook. As you're coming in, if you would hit that share button, hit the like button, hit that follow button. Amen, so that we can spread this great gospel, amen, around the world. When you hit the like button, that helps with the algorithms. That sends it out to other platforms and other social medias, if you will. So do us a favor, help us spread the gospel. Hit that like button, hit that share button, amen. And let's spread the word of God all over the world, man. All right. Lord, I believe the vision. Lord, I believe what you said in your word. Lord, I believe the vision. Lord, I believe what you said in your word. From the north to the south, from the east to the west, it will speak. It will speak. It will speak. It shall come to pass. It shall come to pass. Amen, amen. I believe the vision, I believe what God said in his word. From the north, the south, the east and the west, your vision will speak and it shall come to pass. Amen. We're gonna ask Mom Hawkins if she'll prepare us a scripture, amen, after our prayer, amen, as we endeavor to go forth in our Bible study time on tonight, amen. And if there are any prayer requests on tonight, we're gonna ask that you let it be known. Certainly, we're praying for the saints everywhere, praying for those that are sick and shut in, praying for those that are out of the ark of safety, praying for those that are traveling, those that are working, those that are out of town, those that are yet, amen, dealing with issues, amen, praying for those behind prison walls, praying for the men and women in our militaries, that God will keep them safe, amen. Praying for the service on tonight, amen, that God will, amen, give us clarity, the eyes of our understanding being open as we delve into his word and see what the Lord is saying to us in the scriptures, amen. Pray my strength in the Lord, all those that are on our prayer list, we're praying for them, that God will touch, heal and deliver in the name of Jesus, amen. Praying for our leaders, praying for our churches, that God will, amen, as such as should be saved in these last and evil days, amen. Any other prayer requests on tonight? Amen, amen. Amen, all right, we thank God, amen. Praise the Lord, Sister Ball is watching, amen, on Facebook, we thank God for her, amen, coming in on tonight. Certainly, all of our unspoken requests, the silent requests, we're praying that God will certainly, amen, honor our requests, for he knows what we need even before we ask. He knows the intent and the content of our heart, he knows our desire. And his word tells us, amen, that if we delight ourselves in him, he will give us the desires of our hearts. So we bless God on tonight. All right, gracious God, we thank you for this time of gathering one more time. We thank you, God, for this day, for this is the day you have made and truly we choose to rejoice and be glad in it. Thank you, Lord, for waking us up this morning, clothed and in our right minds with a portion of health and strength. When we rolled out of bed, we discovered we still had the activities of our limbs and the blood was running warm in our veins. Thank you, Lord, for even on last nights lying down, how you watched over us. You kept us in the center of your care. You didn't let any harm or danger come nigh our dwelling, even though danger was all around. God, you dispatched the angels to keep watch over us, keeping us in your protection. And we thank you, Lord, before we ask you for anything, we just wanna thank you for everything. Thank you for your goodness, thank you for your mercy, thank you for your kindness and your tender care. Thank you for providing and making ways out of no ways. Thank you, Lord, for providing for us day after day. You keep on doing great things and God, we are glad and we are thankful and with a heart of thanksgiving, we will bless thee, oh Lord. We bless your name, from the rising of the sun to the going down of the same. Your name is worthy to be praised. We ask, oh God, that you touch here, touch there, touch those, oh God, that are sick, touch those, oh God, in the hospital, in the convalescent home, in the sick room. Touch, oh God, those that are homeless, oh God, dealing with the elements, dealing with the environments, Lord. Touch, oh God, give your sweet deliverance in the name of Jesus. Make a way, oh God, where there seems like there is no way. We know that you are the way maker and we give your name the praise. Or touch those behind the prison walls, touch, oh God, those that are traveling, those that are working, those that are out of town, those, oh God, that have even away, oh God, from the ark of safety. Bring them in before it's everlasting too late, oh God. Save sin-sick souls, oh God, save our children and grandchildren, great grandchildren, God. We call them from the north, the south, the east and the west. You said, oh God, that you would send them in, oh God. You would call sons and daughters from the ends of the earth, that they be seated in the kingdom, God. And we stand upon your word, knowing that you cannot lie and you will not fail. And we thank you, God, thank you for this gathering, oh God, every home that's represented. Blessed in the name of Jesus, all of those on our prayer list, God. Touch and deliver in the name of Jesus. You know every need, whatever the manner of illness or dis ease, oh God. You know and you can heal where we need healing, you can deliver where we need delivering, God. And you can do what no other power can do. And God, we take time to thank you, because we know had it not been for you on our side, we would have been gone, we would have been torn away, we would have been swallowed up a long time ago. But we thank you, God, that by your grace and your mercy, we are not consumed. And we thank you for right here, right now, Lord. We ask that you touch us tonight, God, as we study your word. Touch our hearts and our minds, that we receive your word. Let the eyes of our understanding be open, God, that we might not only hear, oh God, but we can see what you're doing and we can hear, oh God, what thus said the word, what thus said the Lord drew your word. And God, if you do that, we'll be so careful to give you the praise, the honor and the glory, that the words of our mouth and the meditation of my heart be acceptable in thy sight, oh Lord, my strength and my redeemer, that our tongue be as the pen of a ready writer. God, give us clarity of thought, mind and speech. And we will ever give your name the praise and glory in Jesus' name. And we declare now the devil is defeated, God is exalted, Jesus is Lord forevermore. Amen, amen, amen. All right, thank you, thank you, thank you. Our scripture, please.
Scripture is coming from Psalms one oh seven, beginning at the first verse. Oh, give thanks unto the Lord, for he is good, for his mercy endurest forever. Let the redeemed of the Lord say so, whom he has redeemed from the hand of the innard, and gathered them out of the lands, from the east and from the west, from the north and from the south. They wandered in the wilderness in a solitary way, they found no city to dwell in. Hungry and thirsty their soul fainted in them. Then they cried unto the Lord in their trouble, and he delivered them out of their distresses. And he led them forth by the right way, that they might go to a city of habitation. Oh, that men would praise the Lord for his goodness and for his wonderful works to the children of men, for he satisfied the longing soul and filled the hungry soul with goodness. Written nine verses of the Midrash scripture, and the word of the Lord is already blessed.
Amen, amen, thank you, amen, for the reading of the word. All right, again, we say praise the Lord to everyone, amen. Brother Ben Mayberry, God bless you, sir, appreciate you, amen, watching in on tonight. And all of those that are coming in, again, we welcome you, hit that share button, hit the like button, give me some thumbs up, amen. Let the world know that we're here, amen, and we are online, amen. Sister Latoya, I believe that is, amen, God bless you, praise the Lord, appreciate you on tonight. All right, our deeper life Bible study session tonight, we're dealing again, carry on, carrying on with our study of revelations. Tonight, we are in Revelations chapter fourteen, chapter fourteen. And of course, our core scripture in Revelations, chapter seven, verses thirteen and fourteen. And we're talking about these are they, that is our theme, amen, for this series of study. These are they, amen, in Revelations, chapter fourteen, one through twenty, it's quite lengthy, amen, twenty verses here, and we probably won't deal with all of this tonight, amen. We'll get through as much as we can, amen, given our time allotment. But in Revelations fourteen, chapter, chapter fourteen, verses one through twenty, amen, if you'll bear with us, amen, it reads us thus. And I looked, and lo, a lamb stood on the mount Zion. And with him an hundred forty and four thousand, having his father's name written in their foreheads. And I heard a voice from heaven, as the voice of many waters, and as the voice of a great thunder. And I heard the voice of harpers harping with their harps. And they sung as it were a new song before the throne, and before the four beasts, and the elders, and no man could learn that song, but the hundred and forty and four thousand, which were redeemed from the earth. These are they, which were not defiled with women, for they are virgins. These are they, which followed the Lamb, whethersoever he goeth. These were redeemed from among men, being the first fruits unto God, and to the Lamb. And in their mouths were found no guile, for they are without fault before the throne of God. And I saw another angel fly in the midst of heaven, having the everlasting gospel, to preach unto them that dwell on the earth, and to every nation, and kindred, and tongue, and people, saying with a loud voice, fear God, and give glory to him, for the hour of his judgment is come, and worship him that made heaven and earth, and the sea, and the fountains of waters. And there followed another angel, saying, Babylon is fallen, is fallen, the great city, because she made all nations drink of the wine of the wrath of her fornication. And the third angel followed them, saying with a loud voice, if any man worshipped the beast and his image, and received his mark in his forehead or in his hand, the same shall drink of the wine of the wrath of God, which is poured out without mixture into the cup of his indignation, and shall be tormented with fire and brimstone in the presence of the holy angels, and in the presence of the Lamb. And the smoke of their torment ascended up forever and ever, and they have no rest, day nor night, whom worship the beast and his image, and whosoever receiveth the mark of his name. Here is the patience of the saints. Here are they that keep the commandments of God and the faith of Jesus. And I heard a voice from heaven, saying unto me, write, blessed are the dead, which die in the law. From henceforth, yea, saith the Spirit, that they may rest from their labors, and their works do follow them. And I looked, and behold, a white cloud upon the, and upon the cloud one sat like unto the son of man, having on his head a golden crown, and in his hand a sharp sickle. And another angel came out of the temple, crying with a loud voice to him that sat on the cloud, thrust in thy sickle, and reap, for the time is come for thee to reap, for the harvest of the earth is ripe. And he that sat on the cloud thrust his, thrust in his sickle on the earth, and the earth was reaped. And another angel came out of the temple, which was in heaven, or which is in heaven, he also having a sharp sickle. And another angel came out of, from the altar, which had the power over fire, and cried with a loud cry to him that had the sharp sickle, saying, thrust in thy sharp sickle, and gather the clusters of the vine of the earth, for her grapes are fully ripe. And the angel thrust in his sickle to the earth, and gathered the vine of the earth, and cast it into the great winepress of the wrath of God. And the winepress was trodden without the city, and blood came out of the winepress, even unto the horses bridal, by the space of a thousand and six hundred furlongs. Amen. The word of God for the people of God, everybody said, amen. All right, go Pastor Deborah McGowan, bless you, God bless you, praise the Lord, amen. All right, again, we're talking about these are they, these are they. We're studying Revelations, chapter fourteen, these are they. And in this passage of scripture, talking about the hundred and forty-four thousand, we talked about that, or we first learned about this hundred and forty-four thousand in Revelation, chapter seven, where we were talking about the one hundred and forty-four thousand. They were identified as a group of Jewish believers who ministered during the great tribulation. And they're given the seal of protection throughout this tribulation period. And since they stand on the mount Zion with the Lamb, it shows that they emerged victorious from the great tribulation. This hundred and forty-four thousand, they come out of the great tribulation, or they, they come through, I guess I should say, they come through this great tribulation with victory. In other words, there's a hundred and forty-four thousand, amen, that won't give in or won't be tricked, if you will, won't be swayed, won't be deterred, won't be tempted, won't be tricked, won't be deceived by the Antichrist, the hundred and forty-four thousand. They will stand with the Lamb on the mount of Zion, and they will be victorious from the great tribulation. The beast in Revelation thirteen, which we talked about last time, certainly, he's not even, he's not gonna defeat this hundred and forty-four thousand. We'll find that the beast wreaks havoc on many throughout this tribulation period. But this hundred and forty-four thousand, they will not be defeated by the beast, by the Antichrist, by the, the forces that are being, that will go against the forces. It's almost like there'll be a battle between the forces of good and the forces of evil. And this hundred and forty-four thousand will not be defeated by the forces of evil. They will triumph, they will triumph, and there will be worshiping, there will be worshiping. They will stand firm with Jesus Christ, and that's what we need to know today, that even through the tribulation period, if we happen to be left here, amen, we will have to stand firm, amen, with Christ Jesus. I don't plan on being here, amen, because I plan on getting caught away, amen. I'm like my daddy used to say, I wanna go on the first load, hallelujah. I don't wanna have to wait for the second catching away, amen. But I wanna be called up to meet him when he cracks the sky, amen. So in Revelation fourteen, we'll try to answer two important questions that is raised. Actually, the questions were raised in chapter thirteen, but chapter fourteen kinda gives an explanation or gives an answer to the question about what was going on in the previous chapter. The beast in chapter thirteen was terrifying and couldn't, how can I put it? He was trying to, well, weren't trying to, he will deceive many, he will deceive many. And many will fall for it, many will accept the mark in their forehead or in their hand, and many will be deceived by the Antichrist. Many will be deceived by the tricks and by the exploits that he will do. Many will be deceived, thinking that he is the Christ, but in fact, he will be the Antichrist, will be the Antichrist, which we know the Antichrist is already formed. Anything that goes against Christ is Antichrist. So anything that is not falling in line with what the word of God says, anything that's falling, not falling in line and glorifying God, that's going against God, that is the Antichrist. So we could say that the Antichrist has been formed already for many, many years, because we find more and more, as time goes on, there's more and more incidents, more and more activities, more and more things that go against Christ. So for so many years, prior to even this generation, or prior to this century even, Antichrist has been already formed. It's just hasn't been revealed in the form of a person, or it hasn't been revealed in the form of someone coming forth to say, I am the Antichrist, or I am, you know, because he's gonna, he's gonna let himself be known. When the church is taken away, when the church is caught away, and when the gospel ceases to be preached, amen, when the spirit of the Lord is taken out of the world, that's when the Antichrist will be formed, that's when he will be revealed, amen. That's when he will come forth and everyone will see, amen, that he is on the scene, amen. So these questions that will be asked of the, of chapter thirteen and chapter fourteen, going, talking about the Antichrist, so it's fair to say, is the beast completely victorious over God's people? And I would say that the beast is not going to be victorious over God's people. If we are standing firm with Christ, if we are standing for the gospel, if we are standing for Christ's sake, we will not be deceived.
You know, in times when many people are saying, for Christ I live, for Christ I die. That day is coming where you're gonna be called on.
Oh, yes, yes.
And you're not gonna have a choice. And by your very words, since your words have power, by your very words, you will either have to die.
Yeah, oh, yes.
It's not gonna be, well, maybe later, it's gonna be immediate. So with that hundred and forty-four thousand, it's something, you know, we see with our eyes, not with the scales, so we see with our natural eyes, but our spiritual eyes also. And when you see someone stand firm, stand strong, you have something to look at and to report to. Of course, we look to the art of the finisher.
Sure, sure, sure.
But to see someone that stands, and you know they're standing, it gives a little more strength.
Yeah.
Because for those that don't waver, it's tougher than most to stand and not be afraid to stand, because you don't have anybody to your left, your right, you know you have the Lord that's there. And we just, that encouragement.
Well, it's very encouraging to know that, like you say, there's gonna come a time to where you will have to make that choice. You will, you know, we say it now, as you were mentioning, for God I live, for God I die. But there's gonna come a time that you're gonna have to prove that.
It's going on in some countries right now.
Absolutely.
You have one of these.
Absolutely.
Could be your bad dream.
People are being beheaded, people are being assassinated, people are being murdered for the gospel sake, just by your professing to believe in Christ. Not even professing to be, to be saved, the sanctified field with the Holy Ghost and a mighty burning fire, but just even if you say, I believe in Christ Jesus, I believe in the gospel. People are being murdered for that. I've heard on instances, on these school shootings, I don't know if it was the last one, but one of the, the last ones that I heard about, the young man went through the classrooms and asked one young lady, was she a Christian or did she believe in God? And she said, yes, and he shot her dead right there. So it's already happening, it's already going on. And fortunately, it's not so prevalent in this country, but there will be a time, I do believe.
Here we're seeing it, think on a smaller scale, as the enemy sets his foundation.
Oh, yeah.
Things, but in other countries, it's on a greater, greater scale.
Yeah, yeah. Well, we understand that, you know, as you say, if we are standing firm, we will not be deceived by the enemy, and we will not be taken over. And the enemy will not be victorious over God's people. And by the fact that the hundred and forty-four thousand are still standing, that right there says that there we, there will be some that's going to overcome. There will be some that are going to be victorious, there are gonna be some that's gonna hold out until the end, we sing that song, Lord, help me to hold out, until my change come, help me to hold out until the end. And I'm, I'm, I pray, my prayer is, Lord, help me to hold out. I don't wanna be deceived, I don't wanna be, have the wool pulled over my eye. I don't wanna, you know, go blindly towards something that may not be of God, may not be. That's why I, I, I say all the time, we have to hold up the standard. We have to hold up the bloodstained banner, we gotta hold up a standard. So many are falling, so many are letting down, so many are giving in, so many are saying, well, it don't take all that, but it does, it takes that and more. It may not take that for you, but for me, it takes that. For what I've been through, it takes all of that for me, just, just, just to, just to keep what I got. It takes prayer, and it takes fasting, it takes being down on your knees before God. It takes that, just to keep that salvation, because it's so easily to slip away, it's so easy. Sometimes the enemy is so crafty and so cunning, that he can come in and deceive you with something, and before you know it, you've given up, you've let go, you've let down the standard. But that's why we have to keep our eyes sharpened. We have to ever keep our eye on the Lord, keep our own Jesus the author and the finisher of our faith. So by standing firm, that says that we will not be overcome by the beast. So the second question has to do with the satanic director, or the satanic dictator himself. What happens to the beast and all of his followers? The rest of Revelation fourteen will probably deal with that, but we'll get through as much as we can with this. But what happens to the followers of the beast, the followers of the beast? In Revelation seven, the hundred and forty-four thousand are seen at the beginning of the great tribulation. And in Revelation fourteen, it shows them in triumph at the end of the great tribulation. So we see that in the beginning of the tribulation, the hundred and forty-four thousand are standing. And at the end of the tribulation, the hundred and forty-four thousand are standing. So I wanna be a part of those who are standing from the beginning to the end. I wanna be a part of those who are standing. The hundred and forty-four thousand, they gathered on the mount Zion, because Zion, the ancient name for the hills that make up Jerusalem, that is the place where the Messiah gathers his redeemed, and he reigns over them. That one hundred and forty-four thousand are like the young Hebrew boys, we talked about that, I mentioned it briefly. That one hundred and forty-four thousand are like the young Hebrew boys, we talked about that, I mentioned it briefly. Sunday, talking about those Hebrew boys that survived the fiery furnace. Daniel chapter three uh, was talking about that, they survived. Why? Because they stood fast for what they believed. They stood strong in what they believed, they refused to bow down to the king. They refused to eat the king's meat, they refused to drink the king's wine, they refused to bow down to the image of the king, they stood fast and stood strong for what they believed, they would not bow down to any other god. Except the God of their salvation. So we, we, we have to be like them, standing for what we believe in. They proved God's ability to preserve his people. And don't we know that if we're standing for God, he'll preserve us? If we stand strong in his word, he'll preserve us, he'll keep us, amen, he'll preserve us. Having his father's name written on their foreheads. The followers of Satan and the beast may have a mark on their hand or in their forehead. But this mark is just a copy, they're just trying to replicate. What, you know, we talked about it last time, the mark that, that God had, the seal that God has on us will be in our forehead. A, a, and, and the seal or the mark of the beast, he's trying to duplicate or replicate a copy. You know, he wanted to be God in heaven, that's what got him thrown out. He wanted to be over uh, 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 the angels in heaven, wanted to rule in heaven, wanted to place himself above God. That got him kicked out of heaven, so he's trying now with this mark, he's trying to do what God has already done. But don't you know that what God has done can never be duplicated? It can never be replicated, huh? Some says, somebody said, often imitated, but never duplicated. So he's just trying to imitate what God has already done, having his followers accept a mark in their forehead and in their hand. So uh, the mark is a copy of the idea behind the identifying mark on the forehead of each of the hundred and forty-four thousand, showing that they belong to the Father. Aren't you glad you belong to Jesus, aren't you glad you belong to God? I'm glad I belong to the Father, I am his and he is mine. Oh, my goodness, that just, oh, that just, that just gives me a little bit of, uh, uh, a little bit of boost in my spirit to know that I am his and he is mine, hallelujah. And who were the people having his father's name written in their foreheads? They had their father's name, nobody else's name, they had the name of the Father written in their forehead. And what a great deal of attention is made on earth about our distinctions. People make such a big deal about belonging to a certain denomination, or belonging to a certain church, or being associated or affiliated with a certain faith, they make a real big deal about that. But what, when you get to the gates of heaven, when you get to heaven's gate and you ask, well, where are the Baptists at? They're gonna say, there's, there's no such thing as that, there, there, there's a, where, where, where are the Methodist section? He's gonna say, no, there's no Methodist section. Where are the Pentecostals, where, where, where them holding this folk at? Where the whole, and where the Pentecostal church at? They're gonna say, nothing of that sort is up here. But if you ask, where are those who are the born again believers? Where are those who have been born again, been washed in the blood of the Lamb, where are they, where are the? They'll say, yeah, come on in, there's plenty of those. Come on in, we have those here. Those have been washed in the blood of the Lamb, those have had their robes washed, those that have been born again. It's an abundance of them, they're the ones, that's, that's what it is now, it's no more, uh, when we get there, all that's, the, the, the different denominations and the distinctions and the differences between faiths, that's gonna be done away. There'll be no distinctions. All that's gonna matter is whether you receive Christ and you've been born again, you've accepted him as your Lord and Savior, that's what's gonna matter. That's what's gonna be important. Where you have God, where you have the seal in your head. I used to hear my grandmother talk all the time about being sealed in your forehead. Having that mark, being sealed in your, that's how you're gonna identify as being, uh, being God's followers, being God's children, amen, having that seal in your forehead. It said, and I heard the sound of the harpist playing their harps. We remember that the elders in Revelations five and eight, they had harps. And perhaps this is where that music that is heard uh, to accompany that worship, the singing of the hundred and forty-four thousand, perhaps that's where that music comes from, the harps, and they were singing a new song that was unique to them. We hear that song, it said, God gave me a song that the angels cannot sing. I've been washed in the blood of the crucified one, uh, can't nobody else sing that song but those that have been born again, bloodwashed believers. And they sang it as it were a new song before the throne, amen. In Revelation four and one, the hundred and forty-four thousand have their feet firmly planted on the earthly Mount Zion. Yet their praise takes them right into the presence of God, isn't that good news? Right there before the throne of God, your praise brings you into the presence of God. In our praise, in our worship, we, we can't transport ourselves physically and be uh, in heavenly places. But as we worship and as we praise down here, we can praise and worship the presence of God right down here and praise heaven right here on earth. We can bring heaven's atmosphere here on earth when we pray and when we do it the right way. When we do it right, uh, heaven comes down. When we do, what that song says, sing to the power of the Lord comes down. We sing and praise the right way, heaven's atmosphere comes down. To be wrapped in praise to God, uh, that's the highest state of the soul. To be wrapped in the praise of God, to receive the mercy for which we praise God, that's one thing. But to be wholly clothed with praise to God. That's something far more than, than money can buy, that's something far more than earthly riches. That's something far more valuable than rubies and diamonds and pearls. To be clothed in the worship of God. To know that his presence is right there, you just, I just, I, I, that, that's a feeling that's indescribable. You cannot describe the feeling that you have when you have praised God and you worship him and he presents himself with you, and the atmosphere changes and you feel the presence of God. That's something that you can't even describe. That's a feeling that I don't, I don't, I don't even have words to describe what that feeling is, but one thing I know, I like it. I like it. Oh, yeah, to pray heaven down here below to pray, uh, but to praise is the essence of heaven above. Cause that's going on in the heavens. Uh, that, that praise and worship is going on continually in heaven. My God, praise and worship, and I told y'all once before that I heard this sound, I don't, it was on YouTube or somewhere, and I don't know where the sound was coming from, and, and it was just like angels, just voices were all blending, and it was just, it, it, it wasn't any particular tune, but it was just, it was a sound that was melodious, and you could hear, by the physical ear, you could hear a tune, but there were no words, there was no particular uh, melodies, or it, it was just the sound of voices, just in, 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 in worship and, 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 and I don't even know how to describe it, but it was just voices, sounded like angels' voices that was just blending together, and it was a sound that it sounded like heaven had come down. And that gave me a mental picture of what it must be like in heaven all day, all night, twenty-four hours a day. Voices, just praising God, voices, just worshiping voices, no particular words. You know, like I said, angels cannot sing uh, the song that God has given us. Only ones that can sing that is the ones who have been born again, the ones who have been washed in the blood of the Lamb. But it sounds like there's heaven when those voices get together. Heaven won't be just a place to, you, 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 you can't learn that song in heaven. You gonna already have to know that song. You gonna have to know that song when you get there. That's not gonna be a song that you learn once your feet strike Zion. It says, soon as my feet strike Zion, lay down my heavy burden, then I'm gonna shout, then I'm gonna sing, no, no, no. You gonna have to already know that song when you get there. You gonna have to know that song, whatever that melodious, harmonious song, you gonna already have to know it, and we get it down here. We get it down here before we ever get there. That change of your heart, that change of your life, that born again, when you become a born again believer, that's that song that changes, that nobody else can sing that song but you. And you gonna have to know it when you get there, you gotta learn it down here. The notes of grace and the dying love, a, a, and the things that God has done for us, we gonna already have to know that when we get to heaven. And when we've mastered that melody, you'll be able to offer to the Lord a tribute of a grateful heart. And even in heaven, to blend in with those who have gone on before. Those who are already there, we'll just blend in our voices with theirs, blend in our melodies, and we'll be able to sing, amen, and join in with the hundred and forty-four thousand. These are the ones who were not defiled with women, for they are virgins. These are the ones who follow the Lamb wherever he goes. These were redeemed from among men, being first fruits to God and to the Lamb. And in their mouths was found no deceit, for they are without fault before the throne of God. For they are virgins, many people uh, equate virginity and, and purity, uh, the purity of the four, hundred and forty-four thousand, they equate that with the symbol of their general purity. Nevertheless, Paul recommended celibacy in distressing times, first Corinthians seven twenty-five through thirty-five. And Jesus spoke of woes upon those with children and families in that day. Now, it isn't hard to see that God uh, would call these hundred and forty-four thousand to a literal celibacy for the kingdom's sake during the great tribulations. It's not gonna, a, a, none of that kind of stuff is gonna be on the minds. Children and families and starting families and rearing families and all of that marriage and, and, and relationships and all that, that's gonna be a thing really of the past, if you, if you allow me to put it that way. Uh, especially for uh, those that are part of the hundred and forty-four thousand. That, that's not gonna be something that's on their minds. Because they're gonna be solely concentrated on worshiping the Lord Jesus Christ, worshiping the Lamb, hmm, following the Lamb wherever he goes. And they could not be, uh, they, they, they couldn't be uh, those that had deceit in their mouths, or those that were of fault, they're gonna have to be faultless. They're gonna have to be faultless. Each of the vast multitude saved during the tribulation will be saved in exactly the same manner as anyone that's being saved today, and that is by grace. If we're gonna be saved, the only way to be saved is by grace. Through your personal faith in Jesus Christ, we're saved by grace through faith. And not of works, hmm, that any man should boast. But it's through grace. So those that will be saved during the tribulation times, if they're gonna be saved, if there any that's gonna be saved, they'll have to be sa, they'll have to get it the same way that we did. They'll be saved by grace. Uh, even though the rapture of the church ends God's dealings with the church as such on earth, it certainly does not change the way people come to salvation or uh, become part of a larger family of God, which includes all of the redeemed before and after the church. These were the redeemed from among men, being first fruits to God and to the Lamb. Because the hundred and forty-four thousand are the beginnings of the, the greater harvest of the first fruits. The godly nucleus of Israel, which is the token of redemption of the nation. And because they were described as first fruits, many have thought that they themselves will be instrumental in God's plan for bringing in the great gathering during the tribulation. Revelation seven and nine described an innumerable company saved out of the great tribulation. And these hundred and forty-four thousand described as first fruits may be used to preach the gospel to those who will be saved in that period. And those hundred and forty-four thousand, they're gonna be used to preach the gospel. To save those who, if any will be saved during that tribulation period, the hundred and forty-four thousand are gonna be used to preach the gospel. And here's only, here's only one other time that we hear about the angels preaching or an angel preaches the gospel. It said, then I saw another angel flying in the midst of heaven, having the everlasting gospel to preach to those who dwell upon the earth. This other angel preached the gospel, but also announces judgment. The hour of God's judgment has come, so there's an angel that's preaching the gospel. There's another angel that will be declaring that the judgment of God has come. And because the judgment of God is so evident on earth in the great tribulation, it is no wonder why the crowd of those saved through the great tribulation can't be numbered. Those angels are gonna be preaching, that's the only time that we read about in the New Testament, really, that the angels were given the ability or given permission to preach the gospel. It is certain that one day all will give glory to God. Philippians two, nine through eleven said, therefore God also has highly exalted him and given him a name, which is above every name, that at the name of Jesus, every knee should bow of those in heaven and those on earth and those under the earth. And that every tongue should confess that Jesus Christ is Lord to the glory of God. John says, this is the everlasting gospel, that's, that's, that's the gospel that's gonna be preached, that Jesus is Lord. That every knee is gonna have to bow, every tongue is gonna have to confess that Jesus is Lord to the glory of God. He said, thou hast given him a name. So they're gonna be preaching the gospel of that name. Thou hast given him a name that is above every name, that is highly exalted, above every name. That had that name, the name Jesus, every knee shall bow, every tongue confess that Jesus is Lord to the glory of God. That's gonna be the gospel that's preached. To those in the latter part of the great tribulation, they will hear that name. They will know that Jesus is Lord. Hence still something of a gospel message sound, it is the gospel, but it is the gospel in the form that takes when the hour of judgment has set in. Although judgment is going to be doled out, although judgment is going to be passed out, there's still gonna be the opportunity of salvation through the preaching of the gospel. The angels will have the permission, the angels will have the opportunity to preach the gospel, amen. Well, to every nation, to every tribe, every tongue, every people, This can be a valid fulfillment of Jesus's promise in Matthew twenty-four fourteen. That the gospel would be preached to all the world before his second coming. But this can never be valid, it can never be a valid excuse for neglecting the urgency of the missions. There's gonna be an urgency of the mission of preaching the gospel, cause he will, the Lord is soon to come. It is not his will that any should perish, but that all should come to repentance. So even like you said, up until that, people always say, well, I'm on, I'm on wait till I'm on my deathbed and just before. That's idiotic. Never will.
You don't have the power, so stop telling that lie to yourself, come with somebody that knows how to tell you to pray, what to do and how to get your soul saved, instead of sitting there saying, well, sure as I get me right.
Yeah. Sure, it is possible and 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 even up until your dying breath, until the last moment that you breathe. You have the opportunity. But why take that chance, why, why cut it, you're cutting that so close. You don't ever know, you may not have the opportunity to lie on your deathbed and wait for your last, last breath. You may die suddenly. We don't ever know.
So many people do.
Yeah.
But if you have an opportunity and you get to pray with someone.
Oh, yeah.
You see, you feel it and you know it.
But sometimes you 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 never, of course, we are preparing, but we we, as I always say. Our next day is not guaranteed. Our next day is not guaranteed. We may wake up in the morning and go about our day and not make it home at night. Something could happen, you could die of a heart attack, you could die of a automobile crash, you could die suddenly. You may not have the opportunity to lay on your deathbed and have a deathbed confession and receive the. No, you don't have it, you, I I don't understand why people think that they are so uh that they are so privileged to get that opportunity, that's not a guarantee. So before you get to that point, come on and receive him now. The only way that you won't make it are are the the only thing, people say, well. A loving God won't do this, a loving God, no, it's not about a loving God. By your rejection of him, by you not receiving Christ as your Savior. That's what cuts you off from the kingdom. People say, well, sin separates us, and it does. If if you are living the life that's pleasing unto God and you allow sin to enter in, yes, that cuts you off, that that separates you from God. But by your rejection of Christ as Lord and Savior, that's what ends you up in hell. Just to be pu- just to be frank and plain, that's what sends you to hell.
My thought is to be.
Yeah.
Around someone that is transitioning. My thought is don't not be sure, ask them, pray with them, find out, because that is their last opportunity. If they have not, the opportunity is yet available. And I I don't say that I believe God holds you, but if you say that you have the Lord.
Oh, sure.
Sure, you know, make make that make sure.
Yeah, never let that opportunity pass that you are not affording someone else the opportunity to receive Christ. Especially if we say we're ambassadors of Christ and we are followers and we are his representatives. Well, we have to do what he would do, I don't believe that Jesus would bypass anyone without asking them or offering them the opportunity for salvation. So we have to be the same way, and too many times we we pass people by. Too many times we have the opportunity to pass someone on the street. There are plenty of people that are on street corners with signs, you know, wanting help, wanting this and that. And many times we just drive right by and and don't even look their way. But we'll come in church and and raise our hands and worship and worship, just pass somebody on your way to church. And didn't stop and didn't invite them, didn't help them, didn't pray with them. So uh we have much work to do as believers, we have much work to do. Amen. Well, our time is, uh there's much more to unpacking this and I know that we wouldn't get all through it today, but we'll we'll try to to catch it back up next time. Uh but to to sum it up. Let's just say that being part of a nation of believers, being a part of those who are bloodbought, bloodwashed. We have the blessed assurance and the hope that if we stand strong and stand firm. Letting nothing separate us from the love of God. That we we will have the, how can I say, we will have the the fortitude, we will have the courage, we will have uh everything that we need in order to not be deceived, not be tricked by the enemy. To not fall into uh the trap, if you will, of the enemy, because he's laying traps every day. He's laying tricks and pitfalls and 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 ditches and somebody said, be careful of the ditch you dig, cause the ditch you dig for me, you just may fall in it yourself. But the devil is, he he's laying traps for the people of God every day. And we have to be careful because he's so cunning and deceitful and 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 trick, his tricks are are just sometimes something will slip up on you before you know it. And 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 it's easy to sometimes for that trigger to be uh tripped. All of us have our triggers, all of us have our 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 buttons that people can push. And when they, when those buttons are pushed, uh it takes us back to that old man, takes us back to the old place. So we have to be resolute in the fact that we're not going to let the enemy trick us. And when those buttons are pushed, we're gonna be so uh so aware and so alert. That's why it's good to know you, when we know ourselves. I I know, I know what what makes me, you know, when they what they say, tick, tick, boom. I know just what it takes for me to get to that point to where it's tick, 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 then I explode. And since I know that, I have to beware of the enemy's tricks. Because he will, he'll bring those things to you, he'll let somebody get on that last nerve. He'll let that phone call come through or that text message come through a- and you read it wrong and you and you think, well, how dare you, you know. A- a- and those things, those are the little little tricks that the enemy uses, especially now with all this technology and and all of this stuff. Oh my goodness, it's so easy to be caught up in the 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 drama, for lack of a better term, it's easy to get caught up in the drama, social media and all of that, it's easy. But my prayer is, Lord, don't let me fail. I wanna be in the bright. Let me get, let me get somewhere to where my mind is on the Lord. My mind is on the Lord. Think on these things, think on things above. Ever keeping your eye on Jesus, the author, the finisher of your faith. We'll catch up on this next time, our next session will be uh next, when next uh it will be in August, no, July, I'm sorry, July, July, I'm I'm I already got us in I done put us in July. Or I put us through July and trying to get us to August, but it'll be July the oh goodness, July the tenth, is that right, July the tenth, yes. July tenth, if the Lord say the same and he allows us to remain, July tenth, we'll be back again. And we will continue on. There's much more in this fourteenth chapter, even in the scriptures, we didn't get all of, go through it all, but continue reading through that and in your commentaries. Uh and you may be able to bring uh some other revelations to that in your commentary. Uh what you have studied on and and we'll discuss uh discuss what uh what you've read. But I'm thankful to, I'm thankful to the Lord for this insight because uh it lets us know that the enemy will try everything that he can. He will try to trick you, he will try to deceive you. And if he can, he'll get you to try to turn back. He'll have you thinking, well, it's just not worth it, I'm I'm having more problems since I've been saved than I did when I was in the world. And I'm going through much more trouble than when, well, nobody ever said this was gonna be an easy walk. Nobody ever, what does that song say, he never promised you that this would be easy. The way may not be, he never said that it would be. One thing he did promise, to never leave us, nor will he forsake us. He'll be with us always, even to the ends of the earth, amen. Oh, yes, 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 thank you, Sister Ball, the next time will be during our anniversary week, that's right, that's right, that's right, thank you. Uh July tenth, eleventh, twelfth, and fourteenth. So the tenth will be during our anniversary week, we'll have our Bible study and we invite everybody. Uh all of you that are planning on attending the anniversary, come on, that Wednesday we will be in our Bible study and we're gonna open it up. And let everybody be a part of our Bible study. That Wednesday will be Bible study, that Thursday, amen, First Administrative Assistant Superintendent Kenneth Wetherspoon will be bringing the message. And that Friday, amen, Bishop Michael Jackson, Inner City Tabernacle of Life Ministries will be here uh at seven o'clock, but all nights at seven o'clock, uh Friday Bishop Jackson. And that Sunday at three o'clock, three o'clock P M. Amen, our classmate, our friend, amen, Pastor Ernest Merritt. Little Rock, Arkansas, pastor of Saint John Baptist Church there in Little Rock, Arkansas, will be our featured speaker at the three o'clock hour in July, July fourteenth at three o'clock, amen, that's our, that's our anniversary week. Amen, and we are looking forward to what God is going to do during that week, amen, I'm excited, I'm excited, amen. Celebrating seventy-five years that the Lord has sustained us, the Lord has kept us, amen, and we are marching on. We are marching on, don't believe he's brought us this far to leave us, amen, so come and celebrate with us, come and celebrate with us. Amen, and let's just praise the Lord, amen. All right, amen, Sister Vivian Thurman is watching, God bless you, Sister Vivian, appreciate you, amen. All right, anything else, any qu- any other questions, any other comments, anything?
As you and Sister Charles were speaking, oh, you have a chance. And but you don't wanna wait till the end, till the very end of getting that forgiveness thing. But you know, Pastor, I think about people, I've heard people say, well, yeah, if I think, if I think I'm going in, I'm gonna repent. And because I always have a chance, but I see it as, you know. Is that repentance real? Because if God don't take you in, but you think you gonna, and then you get up doing the same thing. So don't you depend, don't wait till that last minute, because your your repenting heart may not be real, you just want you just look and people are saying, I know I can repent at the last minute. I don't know about that, I.
Yeah, yeah, that's a very good point, that's a very good point, a deathbed confession.
Yes.
You know.
But what if God don't let you go?
Yeah.
Raise you back up, then it's like, oh, I was just trying to get in before the door closed, now they're just back open, I'm going back to do my thing.
Yeah, yeah, was that sincere, was that a genuine repentance, was that, repentance means you turn.
Exactly.
And you no longer travel the road that you're traveling. So if that repentance is not genuine, if that repentance is not sincere. Who knows, you may enter into worse things. God may let something come upon you worse than what you, you know, what you're dealing with right now. So you, that's a very good point, you you that's that's like playing Russian roulette with your life, with your salvation, with your soul. That's Russian roulette with your soul. And 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 to 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 me, that's an arrogant attitude to have, because even if God don't take you. It should still humble you that he could have. He could have, he could have, you know, snuffed your life out. And here you are with this, you know, false sense of, well, I can repent on my, no. That again, that's Russian roulette with your soul, a- and to me, the soul is too important, the soul is too precious uh to take that kind of a chance, take that kind of a chance, that's a very good point, thank you for bringing that out. But and and people nowadays especially, people develop that attitude, people develop that attitude. Well, I know that if 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 I'm going in, but again, how do you know? You may not go in, you done confessed to something that you didn't really mean. And and we could, this could be an ongoing discussion. But that's 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 something to really think about. People nowadays especially are that arrogant and that bold to say, well, I'm on, if I know I'm going, then I'm gonna confess and I'm gonna repent. And then, you know, you done asked folk to pray for you to get well, then you get well. You thought you was dying, but you didn't die. And here you are, you left here, now what? You either got to live up to the what you repented to, or you gonna go back into a life of sin and something worse comes upon you. So that's 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 that's, you take a chance, and I I wouldn't want to take that chance, I wouldn't want to take that chance. All right, appreciate you, appreciate all of you, amen on Facebook, thank you for coming in with us and joining in with us. Come back next time, amen, again, if you don't have anywhere to to go to church, if your church is not having services. Come and be with us, we're here, amen, on Sundays, we start Sunday school at nine thirty A M. Our morning worship begins at ten forty-five, we're here every Wednesday, every other Wednesday, second and fourth Wednesday at noon, at noonday prayer. We're here and then at seven P M on every other Wednesday, we're here for Bible study. And we appreciate for what God is doing and what he's going to do, amen, what he's going to do. And as we are receiving our offering for this evening, amen, if you would like to sow a seed. Amen, if you would like to send your tithes, your offerings, you can send your tithes and uh and offering to uh GiveLify. I will put that on in our description, GiveLify or Cash App, amen, Cash App, B stand four three two, dollar sign B stand four three two. And Cash App is Lighthouse Pentecostal, or GiveLify, Lighthouse Pentecostal Church, two hundred North Lincoln Street, Midland, Texas, seven nine seven zero one. Or if you wanna send it in, through the mail, you can do it that way, and we appreciate all of those who are sending in through our giving applications and through uh the mail, through uh mail, send your checks and money orders to Lighthouse Pentecostal Church, two hundred North Lincoln Street. to Lighthouse Pentecostal Church, two hundred North Lincoln Street, Midland, Texas, seven nine seven zero one. And as I always say, if you sow it, God will grow it. Amen. Amen. God bless you, Sister Janet Abraham. Praise the Lord. Janet Brackens Abraham. God bless you. Praise the Lord. Good to see you tonight. All right. We thank everybody once again for being with us on tonight. Keep us in prayer. Keep us in prayer as we endeavor uh to study through the word of the Lord through Revelations. Amen. To see what the Lord is saying to the church. He that hath an ear, let him hear what the Spirit is saying unto the church. Amen. All right. Gracious God, we thank you once again for this time. Thank you for these who have joined us. Thank you, Lord, for every home that's represented. Bless, oh God, our endeavors. Bless our upcoming events, Lord. Have your way that souls will be saved, that those will be delivered. Somebody will be set free. Somebody will be filled with the Spirit, oh God, not just on the outside, but on the inside. Something down on the inside. Oh, God, that changes, that delivers, that sets free, and whom the Son set free, is free indeed. And God, we thank you for this offering that is received. Bless the gift and the givers. Restore one hundredfold. Bind the hand of the enemy, bind the devourer, God. Rebuke the hand of devourer, even now. In Jesus's name, restore it, oh God. And we look for the increase, and we give you thanks for the overflow. And we give all blessings and thanks and praises to your name. And we declare it to be so, and it is so, in Jesus's name. And now may the peace of our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ, the sweet communion of his Holy Spirit, rest, rule, and abide with each one now, henceforth, and forever, and all the people of the Lord said. Amen and amen. The Lord bless you. Be with us again next time. Until we meet again, the Lord bless you real good.